Monday, April 4th. The time is early after 7:30. Thank you for joining us this evening for the meeting of Lakewood City Council. Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Anderson.
President.
Bullock.
Here.
Litten.
Here.
Marx.
Here.
Mallon.
O'Leary.
Here.
O'Malley.
Here.
Move to excuse the absence of Councilmember O'Malley.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
I'm here, actually.
I'm sorry. To excuse the absence.
Yeah, I'm fine. I'll leave. It's opening day.
It was.
So, the motion is to excuse the absence of Councilmember Mallon. Thank you.
I'll second that.
That motion has been made and seconded. Discussion on that motion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All is opposed. That motion passes.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the special meeting of council held February 11, 2016.
Move to dispose without the necessity of a reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. That motion passes.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting of council held March 21, 2016.
Move to dispose of those minutes without the necessity of a reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Any abstentions? That motion passes.
Item one, Committee of the Whole report regarding April 4, 2016 committee meeting.
Thank you. Committee of the Whole did meet this evening first to consider proposed Resolution 8863-16, a lease agreement with the Cleveland Clinic for the lease of 1450 Bell Avenue, Suite 300, also known as the Community Health Center. Councilmembers asked a number of questions and received a presentation from Director Syley and City Planner Jason Russell. A number of facts and other considerations were brought to council's attention regarding the renewal of the lease and Committee of the Whole recommended adoption for full council this evening. Following that discussion, executive session was had to discuss the sale of real personal property, specifically those properties that have come into the city's property portfolio as a result of the master agreement recently signed and the city's sale strategies relative to those properties. That concluded the Committee of the Whole, and I would move that that report be received and filed.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. That motion passes.
Item two, Resolution 8863-16, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with the Cleveland Clinic Foundation for the lease of the real property located at 1450 Bell Avenue, Suite 300, also known as the Community Health Center.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion from council on that motion? Hearing none. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Mallon.
You know, really quick, there was a, in the lease, there's a, and this may have been asked at the Committee of the Whole, so I apologize for being repetitive, but the lease lists a very precise figure for monthly payments for electric. How was that arrived at?
I think that was determined based on historic use of the space.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would also note that Law Director Butler brought to council's attention that there is an indemnification provision in the version of the lease that was attached that will be stricken out prior to execution of that document. And the reason for that is that the indemnification term is both undesirable to the city but also not permissible under Ohio law for a municipality to entrate to. So, yes, Councilman Anderson.
Thank you for that, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to, boys, my appreciation to the administration for having a robust conversation about this topic just about an hour ago. Covered a lot of specifics. Important to note that.
Can't hear you very well.
Thank you. It's important to note that this property underneath this proposed lease will still be a generating, be an income generating property by month. It's not going to cost the city any major outlays or minor outlays for that matter. And if there's been a thorough appraisal done to make sure there's no interrelated defects with the building, et cetera. So, you know, with those questions answered thoroughly, again, I appreciate the administration for doing that. I'm more than happy to support this tonight, so I appreciate that feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have, it looks like, one member of the public signed up to speak on this issue. Are there additional comments from council before public comment?
Sure, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Bullock.
Thanks. Just briefly, I also am happy to support the lease continuation. It's another way of ensuring access to important set of medical services, in this case outpatient OB-GYN and childbearing diagnostics and the like, and that's important for our community. So, it's good that the city is continuing this long-serving tenants' time with us. Bye-bye. All right, thanks.
Thanks. So, we've got a number of comments. I think that at least the first comment is directed at this agenda item. That's Dr. Terrence Kilroy. No. There should be a button on the side maybe.
I think it's on.
Is that on?
I think, I think it is. Oh, I think I heard.
How's that?
That is better.
Cool. Okay. I'm Dr. Terrence Kilroy, 1543 One Inch Water Drive. I wanted to make some comments about the Community Health Center and the lease that's being proposed tonight. I think the problem with the lease is, you know, we're entering a new area in Lakewood because we don't have either Department of Health or the hospital anymore, okay? And so, I think the first thing before you decide on anything to do with the lease of that property is decide what is the purpose of the Community Health Center and decide if the lease is what you want to accomplish that goal. The community, I'm assuming the hospital or, I'm sorry, the city of Lakewood is not into the investment landlord business, and so being a landlord for a property is to accomplish a community goal rather than to accumulate a tenant and accumulate cash. So, I think the first thing that needs to do before you can really decide on this is decide what's the purpose of the Community Health Center. When it was built, largely under the direction of the Department of Health, it was to meet the needs of the elderly, the needs of pregnant women, and the needs of teenagers. And so, the first thing you have to decide is, is what are the community needs now, okay? What entity is going to decide what we should do with that space to accomplish the goals? Are they still the same as they were 20 years ago when this was built to take care of the elderly, to take care of teenagers, and to take care of pregnant women, or not? Okay? So, essentially, what you have to decide is what are the current healthcare needs of the city of Lakewood? You first of all have to decide how you're going to define those needs. You have to decide how you're going to measure those needs. You're going to have to decide how you're going to meet those needs. And then, once you do that, you decide if the Community Health Center and the tenants that you bring in have the appropriate people to do that. Normally, that's done by developing an RFP, by going out and recruiting someone who can meet the goals that you've decided, and finally making those people accountable that your goals are actually met. So, I think, you know, I understand coming up with a tenant to fill the space to get the cash, and it's okay. All right? But you have to remember that this is not going to be functioning under the hospital anymore. It's not going to be under the direction of anybody in this room. I mean, no longer is there going to be board members from the city who are going to direct how this property is actually going to be used and what the clinic's going to do with it, other than just meet the needs that they may have for another office building for their obstetricians or their pediatricians or their teen specialists or whoever else they decide to put into that space. There's nothing in this document really commits them to continue to do the services that are currently being provided there. It just simply gives them floor space at a given price for a given period of time. So, one of the questions I basically have is, what's the purpose of the Community Health Center? And number two is, until you know that, do you really want to have a lease that's going to tie you down for three years when you may decide within the next year you want to use it for something else for the benefit of the city?
Thanks for sharing those comments with us tonight, Mr. Chair. Yes, Councilman Bullock.
Dr. Kilroy, thanks for some thoughtful remarks. The process you described is a good one. It's a long-term strategic planning kind of effort. I think that kind of planning will be underway soon enough with part of our new process to form and to serve the Lakewood Community Health Foundation. The new foundation is going to be formed. We don't have to start entirely from scratch, and I don't think recent community health surveys around the hospital the last five years or so found that the health needs of Lakewood so fluctuated from when this building was originally built to now that, you know, we don't have to, I think, have concern that somehow one of its health services are out of step with Lakewood needs. And three years is frankly modest length of time, so I think we'll have an opportunity to do some of the strategic analysis and planning that you're inviting us to do. It's a good point.
Who's going to do that? Who specifically is going to do that? Do you guys have a committee going together at the city council and we'll start looking at our future needs, or?
Well, there's two ways, there's two ways to answer that. The city as a landlord of this building isn't going to engage, but I think we, the community and the city, as a convening rule that will be starting to get rolling in the coming months, and it'll be a public process where we, the community at large, will have some say in the planning around the Lakewood Community Health Foundation. So, it'll, I think the short answer is it'll be in that institution.
But did you foresee anything?
Dr. Kilroy, I'm sorry. I do have to remind you that it's not a question and answer period, so thank you for the comment, Councilman Bullock, for that particular remark.
Yeah, I just, so the point is, I don't think we're in an either or situation here. I think we can move forward with confidence with this lease for three years, not have a vacancy for 40 percent of our building, keep that building on firm financial footing, keep access to important health services for residents in a convenient location in the downtown, and still have flexibility if we need it at the end of the third year. Thanks.
Thanks. I would also note that in addition to the good points that Councilman Bullock raised, I think it's notable that, I believe this is the third renewal?
Director Syley, is that correct?
Okay. This is the third renewal of this particular lease agreement with this particular tenant. So, certainly, this is a longstanding arrangement with the Community Health Center, and it's representative, obviously, of Lakewood Hospital Association's efforts to serve the health needs of the community as well as the city of Lakewood's now efforts in that regard, and is just a continuation of that arrangement. So, we do have Ms. Osborne. I would ask for a clarification. Are you signed up to speak on this item?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Thank you. Then, it looks like that concludes public comment for this docket item. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from council? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. That motion passes.
Item three, Public Safety Committee report regarding ordinance 416.
Councilman O'Malley.
Dear colleagues, the Public Safety Committee met on February 22 to discuss ordinance 4-16, which proposes to empower animal control with options to better manage pets that have been abandoned by their owners. All members of the committee were present, as were Councilmember Marx, Animal Control Officer Hearn, and Assistant Law Director Swallow. Committee learned that from time to time, animal control must take possession of a pet when its owner has been hospitalized, incarcerated, or is missing. Officer Hearn explained that in these situations, animal control makes every effort to reunite the pet and the owner or to place the pet in the care of a friend or family member of the owner. However, experience has shown that this is not always possible. Ordinance 4-16 gives animal control the authority to place the pet up for adoption, transfer it to another facility, or to euthanize it if efforts to contact its owner unsuccessful. Committee agreed that ordinance 4-16 provides a sensible correction to the code and unanimously recommended adoption by council. Public Safety Committee also met on March 21 to discuss the Lakewood Police Department's 2015 annual report. All members of the committee were present, as were Councilmembers Marx and Anderson, Police Chief O'Malley, and a member of the media. Committee spent the majority of its time looking at the report's information on heroin and opioid arrests and overdoses. For the past several years, there's been a significant increase in heroin use and heroin overdoses nationwide. In 2015, there were 46 heroin overdoses and nine heroin-related deaths in Lakewood. Chief O'Malley advised the committee about fentanyl, a deadly drug that's rapidly increasing in popularity and frequently mixed with heroin. He reviewed LPD's protocols for responding to overdoses and explained the use of Narcan, the drug used to reverse an overdose in progress. Since 2014, all LPD officers have carried Narcan. Chief O'Malley credited the drug with saving several lives. Committee also discussed trends in crime and traffic violations with the chief. The full report is available on the city's website, respectfully submitted.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. That motion passes.
Item four, ordinance 416, amending the code to provide for accounting of disposition of certain animals and establishing related charges.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this motion? This was recently referred to in Councilman O'Malley's communication, was deliberated on by Public Safety and recommended for adoption.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman O'Malley.
I do want to say that I also reached out to the Lakewood Animal Safety and Welfare Advisory Board on this and did not receive any objections.
Councilwoman Marx.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Councilman O'Malley, Lakewood Animal Safety and Welfare Advisory Board doesn't meet again until May.
I, I should, I apologize. I reached out to the chair of the Lakewood Animal Safety and Welfare Advisory Board, who indicated that she would disseminate this to the committee, which I thought may have been done electronically, and I just didn't hear any of that.
And I think it's because we haven't met, so I don't think there's any opposition, but I do appreciate you sending that to the board, that is highly unusual, but very much appreciated, because I think they do want to kind of weigh in on those decisions.
Yeah, and I also, I intended, Mr. Chair, to bring this up at their last meeting, which was postponed. However, I should have let them know in advance that I would have wanted to discuss this when I attended the meeting, but at any rate, I did reach out to the chair of that committee and, or the chair of that board, rather, but didn't get any feedbacks.
Great. Thank you. Any further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor of adoption say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. That motion passes.
Item five, Housing Committee report regarding ordinance 316, 2216, and 2316.
Councilman Anderson.
Thank you so much, councilmembers, and community director, attention to the communication placed on page 45 of this evening's docket, which reveals the process and some of the major points of our discussion a week ago regarding specifically the ordinance concerning the hens and converting, the notion of converting the hens pilot program to a permanent offering in the city of Lakewood. So, I'm not going to read that communication to you specifically, but I will indicate that we had a follow-up hearing this evening and not only talk about the notion of, again, ordinance 2316, but also 316 and 2216. Regarding ordinance 316, it was requested that the committee defer, prefer the deliberation based on some additional information we're going to be receiving from the administration, which we will reconvene at a time that is properly noted. Regarding ordinance 2216, the committee voted to recommend council adoption this evening, which should be on its third reading. And regarding ordinance 2316, a little bit more work to do on the hens-related ordinance, so we will likely have a hearing next Monday evening, time to be determined, but that should be the wrap-up hearing for the hens legislation. So, again, motion to defer for ordinance 316 and to vote to recommend adoption of 2216 and to get to defer 2316. Would this oral and somewhat written communication be received and filed?
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion to receive and file that housing report from Councilman Anderson? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. That motion passes.
Item six, ordinance 316 and ordinance amending section 130660 of the codified ordinances by expanding on the regulations governing exterior electric and fuel-burning cooking devices.
Move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. That motion passes.
Item seven, ordinance 2216 and ordinance to enter into an agreement with a licensed real estate broker to market for sale the real property located at 1252 West Lake Avenue, vacant lot associated with 1589 Newman Avenue, 1589 Newman Avenue, 1635 Hopkins Avenue, and 1214 Gladys Avenue for a period of 120 days pursuant to section 15507 of the codified ordinances.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion to adopt? Yes, Councilman Anderson.
I just wanted to alert the community to the notion that these properties have been identified, and this particular ordinance are all vacant properties. There's no physical structure on these properties, and it's sort of a remnant of houses that had to be raised a number of years ago, unfortunately, but this is about the proper disposition, highest and best disposition of these properties on the market. The building board had a very robust conversation with the administration director Syley this evening about getting the highest and best use of these parcels now as well as potential. So, this gives the administration a bit of time to think about the best ways to go for it, gives them an additional tool to make those proper determinations. Expect a report back from the administration when information is ready to share, and we appreciate you ladies for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? All right. All those in favor of adopting ordinance 22-16 say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. That motion passes.
Item eight, ordinance 2316 and ordinance amending section 505.18, certain animals prohibited in order to permit the keeping of hens in the city under certain conditions.
Move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any additional discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. That motion passes.
Item nine, Public Works Committee report regarding 8862-16.
My understanding is that Councilman Bullock will provide the report. Councilman Bullock.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. My colleague, Mr. Anderson, and I held a public works meeting in the absence of Mr. Mallon, who's got some important family business tonight, for which we're all wearing the room, thanks to the apparent concern of our council clerk, who was very attentive to that. Tonight, we moved to recommend the full council adoption of the Resolution 8862-16, which would authorize the mayor to accept and enter into agreement to accept approximately $400,000 from the Ohio Department of Transportation to encapsulate the sanitary sewer line that runs over the highway to connect the south and north neighborhoods. The issue is that the coating is in need of repair, and so rather than remove and replace, the approach is to encapsulate in a rather expensive but wrapped material that will do the job and extend the life of the sewer main that is suspended alongside the bridge for another, we hope, several decades. And the advantage being that we don't have to remove the coating and potential hazardous materials involved, just encapsulate it. The city is paying $40,000 or incurring $40,000 worth of design cost, and will administer the project. That's to not only our preference, but also the state agency's preference. So, it's a job well done, I think, by Director Benno and his team to negotiate this project with the state and get them to really put the cost of labor and materials, we're going to have oversight. And the expected timeline for this is the city will do design work this year, 2016. The state may take as long as 2017 to complete its end, but at least we'll get the ball rolling this year and reserve our place in their financial line, and that's quite important.
Move to receive and file that oral communication. Second.
Motion's been.
Seconded. Any discussion on the motion to receive and file that oral report? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. That motion passes.
Item 10, Resolution 8862-16, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement to accept approximately $400,000 from the Ohio Department of Transportation, the encapsulation of the sanitary sewer line over I-90 just west of 237.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Director Benno, do you have an additional comment to make on Resolution 8862-16?
No, really, I just wanted to clarify that it was going to be a city bid and city-managed project, and ODOT was, would be paying the contractor, so it would not necessarily be a, an ODOT-run project. Just wanted to clarify that.
That's okay. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. As to 8862-16, I would move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Anderson.
Thank you for that clarification, Director Benno. Not to exceed, correct, not to exceed $400,000 from us and not to exceed the amount we're contributing from ODOT to cover the costs.
Correct. The $400,000 is not to exceed from ODOT, so we haven't finished design yet, but if the construction cost were to be estimated to be over $400,000, we would need to cover that cost. We are not finished with the design yet, so we don't have our final estimate yet. We wouldn't know that as design proceeds.
And to add to Councilman Bullock's wonderful sort of encapsulation of our committee here, this is the $40,000 that would be required from the city to help pay for the sort of design work has already been anticipated and is currently in the 2016 budget, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Any other discussion of 8862-16? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting 8862-16 say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. That motion passes.
Item 11, Resolution 8860-16, a resolution opposing the Trans-Pacific Partnership Agreement.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You'll all recall that this was on our docket once previously, and we all committed to take some time independently to review it and then reconvene at this moment tonight to add any additional discussion or consideration that we might see fit to. Accordingly, any additional comments on Resolution 8860-16? Seeing and hearing none. I would move to adopt Resolution 8860-16. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any additional discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. That motion passes.
Item 12, Ordinance 3215-A and ordinance to amend ordinance 3215, adopted November 2, 2015, to provide for creating positions and rates of pay for full-time and certain part-time annual salary employees and hourly rate employees not covered by a collective bargaining agreement in the several departments, divisions, and offices for the city of Lakewood, including the Chief of Fire, Chief of Police, and Civil Service Commissioners.
Move to substitute.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the substitution? Hearing none. Madam Clerk.
Anderson.
Yes.
Bullock.
Yes.
Litten.
Yes.
Marx.
Yes.
O'Leary.
Yes.
O'Malley.
Yes.
That motion passes. That brings us to item 13.
Item 13, Communication from Councilmember O'Leary regarding appointing Brian Towman to the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Thank you. This communication serves to clarify an error on my part at the last meeting. The docket read that Mr. Towman was to be appointed to the Animal Safety and Welfare Advisory Board. It was my intention to appoint Mr. Towman to the Citizens Advisory Committee. Therefore, dear members of council, at the March 21 meeting of council, I appointed Brian Towman to serve on the Animal Safety and Welfare Advisory Board. It was my intention to appoint him to the Citizens Advisory Committee, and I appreciate was my intention to appoint him to the Citizens Advisory Committee. And I appreciate Mr. Towman's willingness to serve the city in this role and expect that he will make helpful contributions to the important process carried out by the committee. Move that that communication be received and filed.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. I hesitate to ask if there's any discussion of this motion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you very much for allowing me to correct my error.
Item fourteen, Communication from Councilmember O'Malley Regarding Appointment to Lakewood Citizens Advisory Committee.
Councilmember O'Malley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dear members of council, it's my pleasure to appoint Christine Pexeyun to the Citizens Advisory Committee. Ms. Pexeyun has been actively involved in Lakewood for many years, most notably as the past president of Lakewood Council PTAs and as a volunteer for numerous nonprofit organizations. Please join me in thanking Ms. Pexeyun for her willingness to serve on this important committee sincerely.
Thank you. I would move that that communication be received and filed.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item fifteen, Communication from Councilmember O'Malley Regarding Appointment to Lakewood Community Relations Advisory Commission.
Councilman O'Malley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dear members of council, it's my pleasure to appoint Gabrielle Jackson, a resident of Ward Four, to the Lakewood Community Relations Advisory Commission. Ms. Jackson is an active member of our community and involved in a number of charitable and civic causes. I know she'd be a fine addition to the support group. Please join me in thanking Ms. Jackson for her willingness to serve. And I'm pleased that Gabrielle is actually here tonight. Gabrielle, give it a wave. Thank you so much for taking the time out of your schedule to join us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would also extend my congratulations and thanks to Gabrielle for joining us this evening. Thank you so much and good luck with your service term. Move that that communication be received and filed?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item sixteen, Communication from Councilmember Marx Regarding Bedbug Work Group Collaboration.
Councilman Marx?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Dear colleagues, as always, Lakewood's administration looks to stay abreast of issues that concern the overall well-being of residents. In an effort to educate the administration in our community, a bedbug work group formed at the request of the administration. The purpose of the group is to bring together Lakewood municipal and community partners to deliberate on the issue of bedbugs and to determine productive and innovative strategies to address the issues and prevent further infestations. Please see the attached bedbug work group information. Council discussed the concern with bedbugs over the past few years. At the end of our last council meeting, residents of Letcher Towers shared frustration with a lack of responsibility in the eradication of bedbugs in their building. It is now time to bring the bedbug work group together with council to collaborate how best to manage the issues of bedbugs in our community. Motion to receive and file?
Second.
And I'd like to refer this to Human Services?
Second, the motion to receive and file and refer to Health and Human Services. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. I would add that I look forward to that discussion. I think that all council members, not to speak for all of us, but I think that even newer council members have already come to understand that this is an acute issue facing our population and one that is unfortunately problematic to deal with. So I look forward to the conversation and I thank Councilman Marx for bringing it forward to council.
Thank you.
Thanks. As well as the citizens, of course, as well, that have brought this forward. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of receiving and filing and referring to Health and Human Services Committee, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item seventeen, Communication from Councilmember Marx Regarding Lead Safety.
Dear colleagues, on March third, two thousand and sixteen, the New York Times published an article, "Lent is in the News, But Lead Poisoning is Even Worse in Cleveland." The health of the children in Lakewood is certainly a concern of our Human Service Department. Most recent statistics from the County Board of Health indicate that fifty-two children in Lakewood had elevated levels of lead in their blood, not from water, but from household paint. Certainly with the age of our homes, it is likely that all homes in Lakewood at some time in their past history used paint with lead. The federal government took action in the seventies to eliminate lead from gasoline and ban the use of lead in household paints. We must continue our efforts to eliminate the lead threat to children in our older houses. We must be thankful for Lakewood Alive's outreach in the community and educating owners and renters on the dangers of lead paint. Lakewood works with the County Board of Health and its initiatives to eliminate lead paint from Lakewood homes. Both HUD and the Board of Health offer a grant that is available to homes in eligible communities, which Lakewood is one, for free home repairs up to eight thousand dollars to eliminate lead paint from windows, doors, porches, and the outside of the house for owners and renters with children five years or younger and are income-qualified. See attached flyer, please. We must do our best to eliminate the danger of lead poisoning in our children. Our goal for elevated lead levels of lead in the blood of Lakewood's children must be zero. We can all do our part by educating our landlords and homeowners with young children of the impact of lead on the development of a child, learning disabilities, and behavior problems. I request that the attached flyer be posted on the city's website. Funds are available on a first-come, first-thought basis. Lakewood families can reach out to Lakewood Alive for assistance if needed.
Move to receive and file?
Second.
And I'd like to refer this to Human Services?
I would second that motion as well. So we have a motion that's been made and seconded to receive and file and refer to Health and Human Services. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item eighteen, Communication from Councilmember Marx Regarding Citizens Advisory Committee Appointment.
Councilman Marx?
Thank you. Dear members of council, I appreciate Maureen Dastel's service on the Citizens Advisory Committee. It is my pleasure to appoint Neil Patel to the Citizens Advisory Committee for the term beginning January first, two thousand and sixteen, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen. I know that Neil will serve the committee well. Thank you.
Move to receive and file?
File.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item nineteen, Communication from Mayor Summers Regarding Health and Wellness Foundation.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Mayor Summers?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, members of the audience. The new master agreement governing the disposition of healthcare delivery in Lakewood requires our city government to take certain actions to establish a new community wellness foundation. Article four of this agreement, section four point one specifically says that within twelve months following the effective date, the city Lakewood Health Association will jointly agree upon the process for the creation of a new Ohio nonprofit corporation that is formed for the purpose of addressing community health and wellness needs in the city of Lakewood. The challenge will be to establish new governing documents, including articles of incorporation for the new foundation, also select a new foundation's initial board, and cause the new foundation to apply for federal tax exempt status with the Internal Revenue Service. This letter initiates our responsibilities to do so. Prior to coming to you, I began my due diligence process with particular focus on four points. Number one, looking at other conversion foundation processes that have been followed and experiences learned. Two, reviewing the types of nonprofit tax organizations and options that exist. Three, reviewing foundation governance structures and processes for the creation of these structures. And lastly, seeking recommendations about potential nonprofit facilitators and or advisors. I welcome the opportunity to explain all this to you in terms of what I have learned, which is by no means exhaustive or definitive, and to share my initial thoughts about how we might go about moving forward in compliance with a master agreement. I ask that you refer this letter to the appropriate committee for further consideration.
Thank you. I would move that we receive and file this communication and refer it to committee of the whole.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Yes, Councilman Bullock?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. This is a good beginning to a very important component of what we've been working on for some years here. And just a brief question tonight to really clarify for the record. So the city is one party, correct, Mayor, me if I'm wrong, Mayor. City's one of several parties here in the formation of the new Lakewood Community Health Foundation. We'll have a public process for our portion of that formation process. So it'll be an opportunity for the community at large to learn about this, have some insight. But the endpoint of this will be the creation of a new nonprofit entity of some type. There'll be community trustees who will be responsible, but it'll be a separate non-city Lakewood entity. We may have some share in that new entity, but it won't be a city foundation. How am I doing?
You're doing well. It's really the spirit of Dr. Kilroy's points earlier, and he is spot on where we have an opportunity and a need to create focus about community health, what our priorities are, what our needs are, and what we need to do to ensure its improvement. We'll also have the good fortune of having some resources to draw upon to invest in improving our health, as well as leveraging other resources as well. But as a practical matter, other communities across the nation, and there have been many, many, in fact, who have been in our exact shoes. So there is an emerging body of best practices that we can use as a starting point. I would expect that we'll adapt that to fit us, as we should. But oftentimes, there are groups such as this master agreement ordains, elected leaders in this case, who I think will do the primary initiating of this group. I think our opportunity is to point a smaller group, a planning committee, who will do the serious lifting to get all the issues identified and structurally addressed. That would be drawing heavily on the experiences and wealth and knowledge of our community. And ultimately, they would create likely two bodies. One would be a citizens advisory group that would bring all the needs and representation of those needs to our community. They would help identify the creative solutions that would be appropriate to address those needs based on community knowledge and make recommendations to a group of trustees who have the primary fiduciary responsibility of foundation work, which is heavily governed by the IRS. So there's the creative work, the need identification, and the problem-solving phase of what we need to improve our health. And then there's the management of the resources phase. And those are different skills, whether it's in one big group or one or two groups. There are models across the country that articulate both approaches. And we'll have the opportunity to sort through all that. But I would say if we follow a conventional experience, that our job as initiators will be to create this planning group. That planning group, size to be determined, some odd number, so that a vote could be determined with a majority. Maybe it's nine, maybe it's twelve, maybe it's thirteen, maybe it's fifteen. But that group would do some serious, serious visionary work on the structure, you know, the articles of incorporation, the mission, and help get this group off to a very, very strong support. And then identify how folks would get to the citizens, the creative group, and then perhaps the foundation. And then there's the, you know, the regulatory compliance, the money management piece, and the nonprofit status. So a lot of work ahead. Conventionally, groups like, communities like ours, adopt an experienced facilitator. Thus far, I've identified three who have done this work in this area. I think my sense is the planning committee would be the best one to hire this facilitator, since they would have to work with them. I think our role would be to make sure we can get the best folks we can to get this group, support them as we need to. But we, you, city council, and I in particular, have got to figure all these mechanical steps out and strategic steps really over the next several months. The good news is we have time to do this. We have two hundred thousand dollars that's been placed in a trust account of the city that ultimately is foundation money. It is foundation money. We're holding it. That money can be used to help us with some of the startup expenses. But the serious revenue would be forthcoming in the next, really, the next six years, the total of four million. And so we are preparing for the eventuality. But the good news as well is, not only do we have a foundation opportunity and the benefits of those resources, this, I think, serves to create the focus of health in this conversation, which is, I think, what Dr. Kilroy was alluding to, who will do this work. It's my expectation, based on what I've learned, that we will have actually some very exciting, very challenging, very talented bodies to help identify these needs and keep us focused on improving our health. So much to learn, much to share, and much work ahead. But this is the beginning of a very thoughtful, exciting process.
Thank you. Other members of council? Anything? Okay. I would share my thanks to the administration and the mayor in particular for this communication and really express my sincere excitement. And as you said, I think excitement is exactly the word for this process. It's something that I think is very promising and has a real potential to deliver for our community. I would move, I'm sorry, we have a motion and a second, I believe, to receive and file and refer to committee of the whole. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item twenty, Communication from Public Works Director Benno Regarding Bullard Road and Franklin Boulevard Traffic Signalization Project.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. We do have two folks who signed up to speak on that particular docket agenda item. I will call them at this time. Mary Osburn is the first.
No.
No?
We'll figure out.
Brian Essie is signed up to speak on this as well.
Thank you, Brian Essie, one five three zero six, Edgewater. I appreciate what Mayor Summers has said, but it's entirely vague. I didn't hear anything definitive about the process, the types of organizations, the structure. Even though there are three facilitators, I think we should know those facilitators as soon as possible and advisors. And I want to back up. I just sent council an email with documents. The last time I was here, I spoke about a bid steering process, and I wrote the mayor, who said he wanted to take me on and challenged me on my allegation that the process by which the Cleveland Clinic was chosen was a bid steer. Today, I've sent you some documents that are on the official website of city that prove concealment and misrepresentation is ongoing on the city's website. I read from a document last time, which I called the RFP two. We don't know yet whether that was before or after the RFP. The screenshot I've sent you shows five documents existing on the website that have been there for quite some time. The first is subsidiary hospital RFP. The second is a subsidiary preliminary memorandum. And the third is the clinic's response to the RFP. And then there are two sets of slides from the subsidiary. Most of these documents, if not all, were supplied by the Cleveland Clinic and put on the city website. I've documented that through records requests. But the most important thing about this screenshot and what's on the website today is that the RFP, the first two documents, don't relate to the Cleveland Clinic's RFP. The Cleveland Clinic's RFP responded to the different RFP that I read from that was found in the discovery process. And by its terms, the document that's on the website has the same language I read from on March seventh, namely, "In addition, the proposal should include an explanation to describe the primary rationale for the change or reduction of the current scope of services, given the respondents."
Mr. Essie, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you are signed up to speak on a specific agenda item?
I am speaking on that.
Do you have comments related to the formation of the Community Health Foundation?
I'm talking about the concealment. I'm sorry.
Do you have comments related to the formation of the Community Health Foundation?
Yes. This is, this is, this is why we're here on the foundation, is the concealment that continues to go on. And what we just heard was a concealment of what Mayor Summers' findings are on the foundation. He's done work, but it's being concealed from us. And we have an ongoing, active concealment about how the Cleveland Clinic was chosen. And I just read from that document that proves that the Cleveland Clinic was not part of the RFP process to search for the new hospital operator, as is represented today, this minute on the website. So we have ongoing, continuing withholding of information and concealment, as I've addressed this body before, about wind down costs. Those are also being withheld. There's been no explanation in detail, despite public records requests and failure to respond with any details. This is just bad government. We can't be putting six, I think it's sixteen and a half million dollars in this new foundation. You all think it's thirty-two million dollars, but it goes out to two thousand and twenty-six, so it's eleven years or ten more years. The present value of those dollars is really sixteen. But we can't be doing that by one-page letter. This foundation was discussed in August and October of two thousand and thirteen at the LHA Committee that Mr. Bullock and Mr. Summers were a part of. And now we have a one-page letter that's vague about what we're going to do with this money. And the document, as I commented before, says that LHA and the city will together do this and choose this. But we all know that now Mr. Bullock's resigned from the foundation and so is, or the association, and so is Mr. Litton, so is Mr. or Ms. Mattigan. It's the Cleveland Clinic that's going to decide this equally, according to the master agreement with the city. This is a bad, bad situation. And now we have our mayor being entirely vague about the process. And if we're going to have round robin's on this, with you all discussing it outside of our presence, I think that's improper. This was money that was supposed to be returned to the city. And this old beaten-up argument that you diverted it through the master agreement to sit over there because the council can't be trusted is really the way Mr. Summers had represented that to me last April, when I met with him earlier a year ago this week. So again, this is a concealment. This is a misrepresentation of things that relates to the exact agenda item I signed up to speak for here tonight. And it's improper. This is public money, and we need answers. And who are the three? I mean, the silence on the wind down cost makes an admission that there is no such thing. The silence on the RFP, the steering, the bid steering process, the silence is...
Excuse me, excuse me. You can please include your comments.
You've interrupted me several times. Thank you.
That is my prerogative as the chair, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Councilman Bullock. Thanks, Mr. Essie. Nice to see you again. And the, I think that, a couple of thoughts. First, there's a series of factual statements or factual interpretations that I think you made based on just a sheer misunderstanding of the facts. So I would encourage you not to, when you're confused about a fact, jump to the kind of far-reaching and alarmist conclusion that there's concealment going on. Perfect example of the letter on tonight's docket isn't a decision about anything. It's a indication by the mayor to begin months of public discussions to indicate that we've all got opportunity to think, research, read up, and collectively, as a community, put some thought to how we might structure things. So I think what, if you maybe go back and play the video tape after tonight, you'll hear what the mayor said wasn't that there are three facilitators hired or decided upon. He simply read up on three facilitators whom might be considered. And his proposal, if you've heard him, was not that the city decide, but that the yet-to-be-formed group of conveners may hire them. So that's a good example of how it's easy, when you have a long series of many facts, to mishear and misinterpret. And I would request that maybe we don't go from, hey, I'm confused, into making aggressive and alarmist accusations, which turn out to be just an honest misunderstanding of the facts. I did not confuse the...
I was on the website. Mr. Essie, Mr. Essie, you have not been recognized by the chair. Thank you. Please be seated. Council is in the middle of its new business agenda. Thank you. Madam Clerk, item 20.
Item 20, communication from Public Works Director Benno regarding Hilliard Road and Franklin Boulevard Traffic Signalization Project.
Director Benno.
Dear members of council, please find the attached resolution. If adopted, will authorize the mayor to render into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for upgrading the traffic signals and installing the interconnect system along Hilliard Road and Franklin Boulevard. The total cost of the project is approximately $2.3 million. The city's portion of the construction cost is about $476,000, with $33,000 additional dollars for ODOT to manage and bid the project. So this project, a little bit different than the sewer encapsulation project, ODOT would bid and manage the project like they did the other four signalization projects. So our total, our total cost is $509,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that communication?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion to receive and file? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes.
Item 21, Resolution 886416, a resolution appropriating the estimated sum of $509,754 for and authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement, which will allow the city of Lakewood to participate in the upgrade and interconnection of traffic signals along Hilliard Road and Franklin Boulevard in the city of Lakewood with the Ohio Department of Transportation.
Move to refer to Public Works Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion to refer to Public Works? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes.
Item 22, communication from Law Director Butler regarding removal of city health director from demolition code.
Law Director Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. The ordinance that follows, the ordinance that follows this written communication would have the effect of removing the city's health director from a provision of the code that requires the sign-off of several municipal officials before a residential home is demolished in the city. The health direct, this code provision preceded 2008, when the city no longer had a division of health and instead contracted with the County Board of Health for the first time for the provision of its public health services. This code provision happened to survive those changes back in 2008, and so this is a mere code cleanup. We would ask that the ordinance that follows this communication be referred to an appropriate committee for further deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you. I would move to receive and file that communication from Law Director Butler.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion to receive and file? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes.
Item 23, ordinance 2416, an ordinance to amend Section 113309, demolition or removal of residential structures and codified ordinances in the city.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As was noted earlier, ordinances require three readings, so absent the suspension of the rules, we wouldn't be taking an action on this particular item tonight. However, it would be my suggestion, and I believe that this would likely not cause an issue, but I'm certainly open to other suggestions. It would be my inclination to simply leave this on our general docket, given that it's a ministerial kind of code cleanup type issue as opposed to a substantive policy kind of discussion for referral to committee. However, if there are any council members who would like to discuss the change in committee, I'm certainly amenable to that suggestion. Any council members so inclined? Okay. Then I will move to defer ordinance 2416.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any additional discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes. And that brings us to the end of our docket agenda for this evening and to public comment. We have a number of people signed up to speak on public comment sheets tonight. I guess the first would be Mary Osborne. Are you signed up to speak on the hospital?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. My name is Mary Osborne, and I live at 1655 Ullman Avenue here in Lakewood. The saga concerning the future of Lakewood Hospital should have been resolved with the election results last November. Mayor Mike Summers, who favored the new hospital proposal, was elected by 15 points over the other candidate who opposed them. The electorate also defeated issue 63, or issue 64, which would have forced a vote of the people before any decisions could be made regarding the hospital. The effect of that vote was that the people of Lakewood wanted their city council members to represent them and make the decision. In December, after almost a year-long conversation, Lakewood City Council voted unanimously to move forward with a Cleveland Clinic proposal to replace the current 108-year-old Lakewood Hospital inpatient facility with a state-of-the-art family health center. In response, Save Lakewood Hospital issued petitions for a referendum to reverse the city council vote. The city charter allows for this, and it will appear on the November ballot. There are certainly many who say that the public comments from the Save Lakewood Hospital group have been untruthful, irrational, misguided, and brimming with unfocused demotion, particularly during city council meetings. Cooler heads have also been present during these exchanges, reminding the Save Lakewood Hospital folks that, number one, there was an election that clearly supported the wisdom of the plan, and, number two, that no alternative plan has been presented for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next person signed up to speak is Ann Spence.
Ann Spence, 13939 Edgewater Drive, and I lived in Lakewood for 76 years. For the last three months since the master agreement has been passed, I have attended all the council meetings that I was able to and listened to both sides of the argument. Tonight, I'd like to play the devil's advocate on this hospital's deal. All the Lakewood Hospital group has tried to show how much better we would be if the master agreement had not been approved. I'd like to show possibly the worst case if the agreement hadn't been approved. Let's say there was no agreement, and the clinic just decided to close the hospital. At the last meeting, Mr. Monahan stated that the city of Lakewood left $10 million in lease payments on the table. The clinic decided to close the hospital and pay out the lease. Well, you know they aren't going to pay out the full $10 million because they'd insist on a net present value calculation on the payments receiving them sooner than when they were anticipated. But for my scenario, let's say the clinic paid, city of Lakewood, $10 million. The city gained $10 million, but we lost the hospital and the 24/7 emergency room and all of the employees and the related tax revenue that they are now providing to the city of Lakewood. The city then scrambled to ask for bids from others to run the now-closed hospital. This process would take at least two months to get the bid process in, et cetera, with no hospital, no emergency facility. The bids would have to be reviewed and a winner picked. This could take another couple of months. Then there would be a period for negotiation. The last one took 11 months. At this time, the city would have no healthcare facility. In the meantime, the city would be stuck with a parking garage that would, they'd have to repair at a cost of a minimum of $6 million. Boy, that only leaves about $4 million from the $10 million received from the clinic. A gain of $4 million, no hospital, no emergency facility for at least a year. Not all of the $4 million would remain, as even with the hospital closed, there would be still be some expenses for lawn care, snow removal, utilities, safety forces to ensure that the building was secure. Oh, I almost forgot. It was mentioned that 850 Columbia Road would be sold for $10 million instead of the 8.2 million. So let's say that brings Lakewood's gold intake up to $13 million. And note that I'm ignoring really the loss of income tax revenue from the employees, but that leaves about $13 million to the benefit of the city of Lakewood. I could go on and on, but I don't think that's going to change anybody's mind or feelings that is in this room. But let's take a minute to see what the master agreement is getting Lakewood. And I don't know if I have the last copy of the master agreements. Some of these numbers may be wrong. A new foundation with $34 million over time. The sale of Columbia, 8.2 million. Demolition help, $7 million. The clinic's investment in the city of Lakewood of $34 million for a family health center. Ongoing 24/7 emergency facility. The residential properties, which are going to be sold, I'm sure, and I think the estimated value of that is around $900,000. The Curtis Block Building, tax from over, the over 200 employees that are still employed in the emergency room and the hospital.
Ms. Spence, I'm sorry, but we're out of time for this evening.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you.
Karen, I believe Karen Madder is the next person signed up to speak.
Good evening. My name is Karen Madder, 12506 Edgewater Drive. No, I'm not here about the bedbugs. I'm here about emergency management. During the course of Sandy, I was working the shelter at Garfield School for some days. Now, with the loss of Lakewood Hospital, if we would have another incident, if I was put in that position, where would I place those who have some type of communal or infectious disease? Before, Lakewood Hospital was a source. Has anything been done about mitigation to where the ill would be placed during another disaster?
Chief, would you care to shed some light?
The shelters are set up by the Red Cross, and the Red Cross has plans in place as to where we would transfer patients. Patients needed to go, they'd have Fairview Lutheran. There would also be room in the emergency room at Lakewood.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Linda Dahl, is our next speaker?
Linda Dahl, 12506 Edgewater. I came to tell you about the treatment that was supposed to happen on April 1st. I was required to put everything in bags. This comes somewhere between 70 and 90 bags, and it takes me somewhere between 10 and 12 hours. And so for treatment to start Friday morning at 9:00 a.m., I had to start at 9:00 o'clock the night before. I worked all night long to bag everything, to move furniture away from the perimeters. As a single 60-year-old woman hauling around heavy dressers, et cetera, et cetera, my bed is an absolute nightmare. Always before when I had a treatment, they showed up at 9:00. This time, they didn't show up at 9:00. They didn't show up at 10:00. They didn't show up at 11:00 or 12:00 at 1:00. I decided I needed to eat something, and I also needed to use my bathroom. I had piled everything in the bathtub according to directions, and basically my way was blocked. I ended up having to shift things and unpack some things in order to have a regular life. The person showed up at 4:05 and said that the unit was not ready to be treated. I banged, and I emphasized the word bang, for 20 minutes to put things back. While I was busy trying to desperately put things back, he took off, basically wasting my 12 hours. I have living in my apartment, everything bagged, because I can't see. I'm doing it and having to do it all over again, but you can't live that way forever as we stand now. I don't know when I'll get the next treatment. I just know that because it didn't take place in timely manner, there's going to be another treatment added up on the end. I've been doing this since December 23rd. I am exhausted. If you have questions, I encourage you, ask me tonight. I will tell you whatever you want to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman O'Malley.
I don't know if we have other folks from Lake Shore Towers who are speaking tonight, but I did want to take a moment to talk about this issue. In the brief time that I've been representing Word Four on city council, there have been a number of occasions where I've had to resist calls from constituents of mine to inject myself or inject council or inject the city into what amount to private landlord-tenant disputes. I think the situation at Marine Towers, next door to Lake Shore Towers, is an example of where, and my heart breaks for those folks, but, you know, beyond advocating for strict code enforcement, which I've done, you know, there have been things that they've asked me to do, which I just don't think are the appropriate role of government or the appropriate role of this government. The situation at Lake Shore Towers is one where we absolutely have to do something, Mr. Chair. We heard, the owner there is flagrantly breaking the law. We have, we heard from folks a couple of weeks ago, some of whom were here tonight, about the fact that they are being charged not only to remedy the bedbug treatments in their own units, but for neighboring units as well. The imprecise nature of identifying how bedbugs came to affect a particular unit makes that not only unjust, but we have an ordinance that states in part, and this is ordinance, it's part of our codified ordinance, it's 130634, "Whenever infestation exists in two or more occupancies or in the shared or public parts of a dwelling containing two or more dwelling units or in the shared or public parts of an occupiable structure, extermination thereof shall be the responsibility of the owner." And those costs are instead being paid by the impoverished senior citizens at Lake Shore Towers. This place, I met with the property manager last week, who indicated to me that this is not a widespread infestation. not a widespread infestation in this building. I met the next day with the executive director of the Cleveland Tenants Organization, who stated that they conducted an anonymous survey throughout the building. They literally went door-to-door in Lake Shore Towers, where there are 186 units. They had 82 people participate in this survey. 60% of the respondents stated that they had experienced bedbugs in the last 10 years. I personally witnessed evidence of infestation in common areas of the building. I got a tour throughout the building, where I saw mold growing up and down the walls in the rec room of that building, three-foot wide sinkholes in the parking garage, but I don't want to stray too far from the bedbug incident, which, again, is just, I think, at a point where if it needs to be spelled out very specifically for the property manager there, and by the way, this is not the policy that they have at Westerly or Feeder Manor, where they do take responsibility as the owners in accordance with our laws to pay for, not only to make the phone call to the exterminator. That's not what responsibility means. It means to pay for it as well, and not to pass those costs on to low-income tenants. It's in violation of the HADMATE lease, it's in violation of state law, and they're breaking the laws of this city. And, you know, Shaw Management Corporation, which owns this building, I know it's a long way from Columbus, Ohio, where they're headquartered, but the actual impact on the people that they're imposing these costs on to is a living hell. And we need to do something about it. There's been a demand letter that I know that's been sent by Maria Smith, who's one of the most well-respected landlord-tenant attorneys that I know, on behalf of these individuals to demand that they retract this policy. I think they need to waive the costs of these bedbug treatments pending and future, and reimburse all of the residents of Lake Shore Towers for any past charge that they've had in violation of our ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would, I really want to note that I appreciate those comments, and I think that, as I mentioned earlier, in regards to Councilwoman Marks's communication that was on the docket, to say that this issue has the attention of council, I think, is an understatement at this point, but I know that that comes a little bit late and is cold solace to a number of the residents who have unfortunately been dealing with the situation for such a long time now. So in line with your comments, I would certainly welcome, either as a part of the discussion that Councilwoman Marks has brought forward, or as part of a different discussion, if that's your preference, but I would certainly welcome consideration of increased penalties or additional provisions of Lakewood's law, not to, again, begin deliberation right at this moment, but certainly exploring all the options that we have available to us as a policymaking body on this issue, which has been difficult to deal with comprehensively or even non-comprehensively.
Let me just underscore my appreciation for not only what Councilwoman Marks introduced tonight, but the work of the Human Services Department, Lakewood Alive, our Bedbug Task Force, which has been phenomenal in terms of really getting to the root of the problem of bedbugs, education, which is a huge part of this. You know, my comments tonight are really narrow into the particular, I think scandalous situation at Lake Shore Towers, where they are being charged outrageous amounts of fees, not itemized fees, by the way, for the actual remedying of that situation.
Thanks. The other council members are kind of on the hearing. Lynette Eadie is our next speaker. And I want to, I do see your note to call first, but I've worked my way down and I'm just seeing.
That's all right. I had a strategy, but my name is Lynette Eadie, and I'm the chairperson of the tenants organization, and I want to bring people from our buildings, so it won't be just from my mouth or from the councilwoman's mouth. I want you to hear the pain and the suffering and how real it is. So according to your ordinance, 1306.34, that was, I think, put in place in 1997, can we please have you add something so people like Shaw could understand that they are financially responsible because they're passing it on? I've talked to HUD, and they said that they cannot regulate their attitude, and they have the little loophole that says if the person does not report in a timely manner, they can be charged. And they're making people sign to say that they did not report in a timely manner or get evicted. This is a bullying technique, and we need your help. I'm not going to take a lot of time because I brought some witnesses.
Okay. Are these folks also signed up to speak after you, or are these?
They're signed.
They are? Okay. It's fine. I just wanted to clarify. So I should call Mary Otter?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you. My name is Mary Otter. I live at Lake Shore Towers. Thank you for realizing how important that this issue is to the seniors there especially.
Thank you.
I'm one of the people that got charged $600 after the fact that my unit was serviced, but the thing that annoyed me the most is supposedly they told me my unit had been pre-treated at one time, and then came back six weeks later and said I had bedbug infestation. So the thing is, is that not only are they not being truthful with us, but I actually think they're actually trying to get money from us, because if a unit's been pre-treated, why would you have bedbugs? They didn't have them to begin with. They got them after the fact. So there's a couple of different things there that just don't seem quite right with the way they're doing the extermination. And the other thing is the fact that they do make a sign of paper saying if we don't agree to pay, then they can evict. So, I mean, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place there, so whatever possible help you can give us. And they did break it down. I mean, they did break down the bill. You know, my unit was $285, and I also got to pay for two other units that were pre-treated supposedly. And because my unit also wasn't ready, I got to pay another $42. So it just seems like, however, they could keep adding money to those bills, and they must be paid within a year. Now luckily, my social security came in, because all I could really have afforded was $20 a month, and they said, oh, no, you must pay it up in a year. So there's my choice, pay the exterminator or give cable. I don't have cable. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair. Councilman Bullock.
Thanks. Once again, members of the community, thanks for coming to make very clear how acutely you're experiencing this problem. Mr. O'Malley, I'd be happy to join you for a meeting with the property owner, with the property manager. Could we get the contractor name and phone number of the gentleman who wasn't helpful to you, ma'am? I'll be happy to call that person directly. HUD is a federal agency. We have a very attentive Congresswoman. She can get involved. I doubt that HUD is supervising all its properties with the full-time attention it needs. We can help them pay attention. So let's do that. I'd be happy to support your adversary, Dan. And, you know, some of these management discussions and oversight discussions can start with our attention. They don't all have to take the form of legal subpoenas, which I have every confidence that Mr. Butler could help us prepare as appropriate.
Legal citations. Director Delsamino.
Thank you. I just wanted to inform you a little bit about the frustration around the issue of bedbugs and enforcement, and I mentioned that briefly at our last meeting, which is why, and I really appreciate Councilwoman Marks including the bedbug work group kind of task list, because we are absolutely looking at trying to address ordinances, whether they are at local levels or state levels, at the health department level. This is, it is very difficult to find an ordinance that is enforceable clearly. The ordinance that we refer to around infestation, I also agree that that is a piece that we can use and that I think we should attempt to, but the whole definition of infestation becomes, it makes it a little complicated. Again, this issue keeps getting complicated. So, Councilwoman O'Malley, I'm thrilled that you're involved. I have spoken a number of times to Mr. Shaw himself and his second, so they are fully aware of our frustrations and concern with the building, and I will welcome any support from council on this issue because it is something that we need to be paying attention to. Lake Shore is our most critical issue because it's right here, but the reality of it is, is that we know that bedbugs have been moving through Ohio from Cincinnati to Columbus to Cleveland. So this is an opportunity for us to create a protocol that we follow anytime something like this happens.
Thank you.
And, sorry, just one more. I wanted also for all of you to be aware, and you mentioned this, Councilwoman O'Malley, that legal aid is involved in this situation. So there is activity going on there. Cleveland tenants have been very supportive, and they were able to begin to bridge that. So there is some activity, actually, the potential of a case.
Thanks very much. Angie Favors is our next speaker.
Good evening. I am Angelina Favors, and I live at Lake Shore Towers. And I made this statement to be true, the topic about the bedbug infestation at Lake Shore Towers. I notified the office, the manager's office, myself, that I have a problem with infestation, and they treated my apartment twice. And I asked them, well, did you find anything? What they said was, they only found a skeletal remain of one bedbug. I received a bill of $297, which I told them, I cannot pay this since I'm on subsidized housing and food stamps and Medicaid. I also have a problem with the managers because I remade several requests because I have asthma and arthritis to have an air conditioner in my unit, and I was denied twice for that. I would be grateful for any kind of help that you can give me, and also I would like to add, I'm a U.S. Armed Forces veteran, so I take it doubly hard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Edward Graham, 1286 Chase. I just want to take a minute to discuss the committee of the whole meeting that took place a little earlier this evening. My main interest is the illegality of the executive session that the people on this council voted in favor of. Number one, there was an illegal motion to go into executive session. Number two, the members of council all voted in favor of that illegal motion. And after the vote took place, and citizens asked the question, what is this executive session for? And the council president said, we don't have to tell you. If there's anything that really is totally out of place as a response like that, the law is, in some senses, fairly elementary. In other senses, there's a lot of nuances. But I think that people who are in positions where they are voting on things should know the basic elementary law. That motion was illegal. The response just magnifies it all the more. It's the type of thing you might expect from Bashar Assad to say, we don't have to tell you, but there is a law in Ohio called the Sunshine Law, and everything is supposed to be out in the open. This shouldn't be a third-world operation. This should be run according to law, and I would recommend that those of you, which is all of you, who voted for the illegal motion and the illegal executive session, start studying up. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to correct the record there, you'll recall that a motion was made to enter into executive session to discuss the sale of real or personal property at competitive bid, which is a permissible exception under Ohio's Sunshine Law. And when I came back into the room to report out on committee of the whole's executive session, I indicated that the executive session was held to consider the sale of properties that have come into the city's property portfolio as a result of the master agreement, and that was what the executive session was held for, as I said both prior to the executive session and upon reconvening here in the auditorium. So in any case, our next speaker is Dean Delsel.
Dean, council citizens, I'm here to talk about health care tonight. During the discussion about the master agreement, a number of--
I'm sorry, Mr. Delsel, your address for the record.
1276 French Avenue. I'm sure you probably knew it by now. You had expressed a desire to maintain continuing emergency care as a key reason to move forward with the master agreement. Are you aware of the needed volume of patients at that ER to make it viable? Is that something that's been discussed? Do you know the actual number of patients that are being seen over the last six weeks in a Lakewood ER? Would you be surprised to learn that residents may have decided that it's an arena, an ER in name only? Do you know what are the consequences if volume targets are not met? Do you think that is important? You've been informed tonight that there is a real possibility that the ER as currently configured may not be sustainable. What are you going to do about it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
In discussions with Dr. Welsh, the ER needs 60 patients to make it for sustainability, to maintain their current staff. They've been averaging 45 patients a day with a high of, I believe, 80, and a low, I believe, on February 14th of 14, which was an exceptionally cold day. Our transports to Lakewood Hospital from Lakewood Fire, still running about 60% of the patients we transport are going to the ER. 40% are going between, the majority in Faribault Metro or Lutheran.
Thanks. Mr. Monahan.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Tom Monahan. I live in 1487--
I live at 1487 Waterbury Road. And I would like to talk about our emergency room. It really didn't take long for us to lose a patient. I don't know if any of you saw the Lakewood Observer. This gentleman was admitted to the hospital in early March. I guess the squad brought him in. They had low blood pressure. He had his power of attorney for healthcare with him. And when he tried to advise the patient about his options, the Cleveland Clinic's security guard blocked him from entering the room. It was a long delay and he didn't want to go to Fairview. He wanted to go to St. John's. And by the time they got an ambulance to transfer him there, he died. So, we're sitting here talking about honest, strong leadership for Lakewood. And in here, "We will pursue the solution for Lakewood's healthcare that works best for our entire community. Lakewood will have a new state-of-the-art emergency room or primary care, healthcare, blah, blah." Without this plan, it will require an enormous new tax on residents just to keep outdated Lakewood Hospital open. Been repeated over and over again. That's part of the reason that Issue 64 was screwed up. And we started talking to people who voted, they didn't understand this because enough of this obfuscation was put out there in the street. Got this in the mail with my water bill. Someone needs to be transported to another facility. One longer transports hurt medical care. And this is not a knock on the Lakewood Firemen and paramedics because they're an outstanding group. But it's the delay that you get from transferring from the hospital, from the emergency room to the hospital that you want to go to. Also, part of that sheet that came out is that this-- Does this mean that a hospital cannot go on the site? I'll read very quickly. Of course, other healthcare entities have opportunities to provide healthcare services in the city of Lakewood. However, as part of the consideration for the clinic's purchase of the family health center site, a restrictive covenant was placed on the current hospital site. That means there are some restrictions about what can be built on the site of the former hospital, including general or oncology hospitals. Those would need prior approval of the clinic. Does this mean that other healthcare facilities couldn't open the existing hospital site? No. Other hospitals could open without prior approval of the clinic. Those include children's hospitals or outpatient care facilities operated by independent physicians and licensed provider groups. No, that's really a misleading statement. A totally absolute misleading statement. Where are the independent physicians going to get millions of dollars to staff a hospital? You know that. Will there be an increase in taxes? There will not be an increase in the income tax rates as a result of the elimination of inpatient services. Your handout said that. A little bit disingenuous is what I'm talking about. And that's why we have the problem that we have today. And you can stay up there, Mr. Bullock, and talk about a misinterpretation of facts. Clear facts come out. And if you want to interpret them another way, that's your problem. Did anybody see the handout or the PowerPoint that was presented by Metro Hospital, any of you from council? It was just, it submitted to the court on Friday in an amended petition for a lawsuit. We had to go for a subpoena and get it. It's very interesting. Go online on the court and read it. It's all in color and nice pictures and pie graphs and things like that. The object of the, of what we've gone through and we're going to continue to go through is, it's not going to be pleasant for the next few years, I'm telling you that. Had a person call me Monday after Easter and said, "Why don't you people quit? Why don't you quit?" Me specifically. I got hacked off and I said, "Let me tell you, pal. Yesterday was Easter Sunday and 100 years ago that day, my father was fighting with the Irish Republican Army in Dublin to throw the British out of, out of Ireland." He passed that DNA on to me, so you people better watch it. Thank you.
Mary Ann Monahan?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have not read the article in Lakewood Observer, but I am aware of the patient that Mr. Monahan refers to, and there is far more to that story that is being told here. I was made aware of that several weeks ago.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
My name is Mary Ann Monahan. I'm 1487 Waterbury Road, Lakewood, Ohio. And I just have a few remarks. I want to make my voice kind of bad tonight, so bear with me. Mayor Summers, you and council run this city as though you are the CEO and the board of directors of a privately owned company, not a government. This city is not your private business. This city belongs to the residents and you serve at our pleasure. Mayor, when you had your business, you were the boss. You hired, fired, and set policy. You were responsible for growing the business, paying the bills, and assuring that your employees were paid on a regular basis. What would you have done to employees who worked against you, who worked against your policies, who negotiated deals that benefited them or other companies rather than your company? I'm sure they wouldn't have worked for you very long. Yet this is exactly what has happened here in Lakewood. The citizens of Lakewood own the hospital, but it's been negotiated away from us by the very people we elected to safeguard our city and our assets. And who benefits from this whole deal? Cleveland Clinic. Did we elect you to look out for Cleveland Clinic's interests or look out for our interests as well be? Some administrative and council members think that we are defeated and that we will dry up and blow away. Think again. With each metaphorical slap in the face we sustain, each move that you think hurts us or knocks us back, we grow stronger and we're determined. So, we are not going away. Get used to us. On another issue I have to talk about, several months ago, I spoke with the city's communication department about the reverse 911 system. I complained that we're never notified about what is going on in the city. I suppose I shouldn't be surprised that a non-transparent administration doesn't utilize a system designed to provide transparency. I have children who live in Fairview, Westlake, Rocky River, and Beachwood. When I signed up for the reverse 911 notifications, I signed up for Lakewood as well as these communities where, where the boys live. I received more information about these communities, especially Rocky River, in one month than I had received from Lakewood the whole time I've been in the program. Rocky River notifies residents about changes in garbage schedules, street closing, major accidents and incidents that are occurring within the city in real time, holiday events, water main breaks, and other pertinent information. When I called City Hall, I told them that, they told, when I called City Hall to talk to them about this, they told me that they didn't want to burden the residents with this information. If this isn't exact quote, but this is what it's bound to. To give people too much information and they wouldn't pay attention to any of it. I was, however, they did say they would look into it. Today, nothing's changed in the Lakewood system. Still no transparency, but still no sharing of information that could benefit our daily lives. And a perfect example of that is this statement that back on 3/18, they shut off our water. Now, the only reason we knew that, the only reason I have this, we found a blowing through our yard. It was not attached to the front door. Nobody knocked on the door and said, "Your water's going to be turned off." Tom found this blowing around the yard. When he brought it in, it does not give any addresses on here. It just gives a date saying, "Your water's going to be off for six to eight hours." So, Tom called the non-emergency number and they said they had no, had gotten no information about water being turned off. Yet at midnight, the water went off and it didn't come back on until morning. So, this is a perfect example, whereas if it had been put out-- And let me say that these reverse 911 calls, you can, you can designate how you want them. You can get them on text, you can get them on your cellphone, or you can get them on your house phone. Or you can get them on all of them if you want to, which I do. Now, we are not, you know, we're always up here talking and with me, but we are not your enemies. We want to be heard. We have people in our, Save Lakewood Hospital who have wonderful ideas. These are well-educated people. They know, they know their professions and they want to help. They want to work with you to develop and sustain a strong, vibrant Lakewood. You are the people that have built up walls, that are promoting non--
I'm sorry, I will have to leave it there for tonight. Thank you, Dorothy.
I just want to say thank you. Think again. This is a new era and we're here to save. Thank you.
Thanks. Dorothy Abel?
Good evening. I'm Dorothy Abel, 2180 Galter Road, Lakewood. I'm a concerned Lakewood homeowner of over 50 years. I would think that anyone with good common sense would have wanted our city-owned hospital saved, just because it's, you know, an old building and had been properly maintained over the years. You know, always, you know, rooms enlarged and, you know, new orthopedic unit and, you know, just good things had been going on with the hospital until maybe five years ago when the clinic decides that they're not going to keep up with the, wanting to keep, they just wanted Lakewood to, you know, forget about this lease for, until 2026. So, if many of the over 1,000 former hospital employees move out of the city, Lakewood will lose income tax money. Then, will you be raising our home owner taxes? Will the newly built schools all be needed? The hospital was Lakewood's largest employer. We don't need more small businesses here. I don't understand how some of the smaller businesses are even making enough money to pay the rent in Lakewood. Now, the established businesses are affected when the people lost their jobs at the hospital. I am a retired nurse and I'm very concerned that the clinic is saying Lakewood will have a supposedly world-class healthcare when every, anyone with good common sense knows that in an area such as this, over 50,000 people, many seniors at nursing homes, we need more than an emergency room. We need our hospital with inpatient beds so that residents don't die on their way to another hospital to be admitted. We need, we must save jobs and lives in Lakewood by keeping our hospital. Please, don't let our city be ruined by the big monopoly, Cleveland Clinic. Thank you.
Kevin Young is our next speaker.
My name is Kevin Young. I live at 1598 Elber Avenue. I was home this past holiday weekend to see Mom. Like we do every holiday, we talked about Dad. For the first time since Dad died, she talked about, in detail, she talked about the night she drove him to the emergency room where he passed away from a heart attack. She said he woke up in the middle of the night with incredible chest pains. He looked terrible, she said. Waiting for an emergency vehicle made no sense since the fastest way to get him to an emergency room was for me to drive. Mom said that in the 25 years of marriage that they were together, she never heard him cry out in pain like he did that night, lying in the back of the car, clutching his chest as she drove at high speeds, running red lights. Mom pulled up to the emergency room entrance and managed to get Dad through the doors. They worked on him for 30 minutes, she said. Mom was standing by his side when suddenly his eyes rolled back in his head and it was all over. Friends who were doctors said that since the emergency room they went to did not have a cardiac unit, Dad's chances of survival were severely compromised. He might have made it, but he didn't. In the latest edition of the Lakewood Observer, you will find a balanced, well-researched article about our freestanding emergency department, written by Matt Koons. In the first paragraph, Matt Koons provides a link to the Cleveland Clinic website that clearly states that if you are having a heart attack, a stroke, or if you fall off a ladder, or experience a serious burn in the kitchen, or break a bone, you need to get to the nearest hospital. A full-service hospital, not what we have here in Lakewood. Later in the article, Mr. Koons cites that in an article in USA Today, they say that a majority of the people who show up at emergency rooms with heart attacks either drive themselves or have somebody drive them there, just like my mother did for my father. Clutching chest, crying out in pain, people who are in the desperate throes of having a heart attack are looking for immediate, for an immediate lifeline. And to an overwhelming number of people, that means getting to a building that has a big red sign that says "emergency." In Lakewood, this tragic scenario has now become a very real and tragic occurrence. In the same Lakewood Observer that Mr. Koons, Mr. Koons' article was presented, you will find an article about Norman, about Norman that we spoke about, Norman Zumanich, excuse me if I mispronounced it, who, who made it to our freestanding emergency department but did not live to tell the story. Reports have it that he wanted to go to the Lakewood emergency room thinking, as anyone would, that they were fully equipped to save him. If he had only known what the Cleveland Clinic website clearly states, if he had heard what Dr. Kilroy has explained to us in this very chamber several times, maybe he would have made it. But unfortunately, he didn't. It cannot be denied that there is a great deal of confusion about the difference between a freestanding emergency department like the one here and the one that is attached to Fairview Hospital. The whole hospital deal was rammed through while we were told that this emergency room we have now would be all that we need to ensure that the lives of our town would be everything that they need, even if there was a heart attack, even if a stroke was involved. Before another person makes this tragic mistake of driving themselves to our freestanding emergency room, I urged the city council to approve a direct mail piece to go to every resident in this town that clearly states what the Cleveland Clinic website states. If you are having a heart attack, a stroke, or other serious life-threatening problems, get to a full-service emergency room that is attached to a full-service hospital. Councilman Marks has championed the underserved so many times in this council. Maybe she could initiate this. Dave Anderson has distinguished himself as a thoughtful and measured commentator on all issues here. Maybe he could initiate that. Councilwoman O'Malley, in the short time that he has occupied his position, has taken, has demonstrated that he has a great deal of human compassion in the positions that he has bravely taken. Maybe one of you could initiate, take this first step, and let everybody know--
Thank you.
--what's going on. This is your time to be a hero.
Mr. Essie?
Thank you.
Is our next speaker.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you for the discussion. I will follow up on what I can find about the facts of this medical case, but I hope that this is not political grandstanding based on somebody's life.
It's saving lives, though. Here are the printouts from the Cleveland Clinic's website.
More than one speech tonight with coordinated talking points. And one thing I've learned during service is get all the facts before we make loud theatrical speeches.
They're in this article.
It is crossing a line if this is political grandstanding on somebody's medical history.
We're saving lives.
Thank you. Chief Gilman?
Obviously, in the Observer, it must be true. There's more to this story that has been told tonight and I don't, there's some things that I can say and that I can't, but there's far more that is being told in this story than what is being presented tonight.
Understood. And Chief, to clarify there, your reticence or reluctance to share some details is not because you are being withholding and simply not wanting to share those details, it's because federal law precludes you from sharing those details. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Marks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to say that instead of--
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to say that instead of coming up to the podium and wanting to lay blame on why someone would die in the emergency department, I have said right from the very beginning, we have a great EMS department. If anybody feels they're having a stroke or a heart attack, the best way to be treated is to call EMS, not to drive anyone to any emergency department anywhere, because life-saving starts with EMS showing up at your home. And our EMS has like a less than five-minute response time. So I encourage everyone, and I think that maybe Mr. Koons should write an article for the Lakewood Observer about calling EMS if you feel that you're having a heart attack or a stroke. The best thing to do is contact the people who can get you the proper care, to the proper facility for what you're having. And there is a difference in the type of stroke you're having. So it's more education on the level of all of the community. And as Chief Gilman said, HIPAA precludes anyone from having the information. So I doubt that the letter that's in the Observer about the death of that patient has all the information that is accurate. So I would respect you to be careful about what you're supporting as being factual and truthful. It probably didn't come from the emergency department, didn't come from a doctor, don't know who it came from, but I would be skeptical about what information is in there. And, you know, all hospitals, the Observer is not absolute truth. Sorry to say, it's not absolute truth. And I know that, you know, hospital... patients die in hospitals, they die in emergency rooms, they die in transport, they die for many reasons, not just because the hospital has been closed.
Thank you, Councilman Marks. Mr. Essie.
Brian Essie, 15306 Edgewater Drive. There's a lot of misinformation that goes around. I appreciate what Councilwoman Marks has said. I did not misstate what Mr. Summers said. He identified... he said he's identified three people, and he's done some due diligence. He should share that with us. I did not suggest an agreement was made. Now, Mr. Butler, as we were sitting here, responded to one of my 173 outstanding records requests. And he, as I mentioned before, evidence is mounting about the process that was flawed. And he has documented now that the city has no responsive records and in response to an authorization by the city to authorize Subsidian to issue the preliminary memorandum, which is on the city's website. And he says, "Subsidian did not issue a document called a preliminary memorandum on behalf of the city. Subsidian represented the Lakewood Hospital Association, not the city in this work." This is an indicia of bid rigging and bid steering. This document on the city's website says, and I'm quoting, "The municipality has asked Subsidian to provide this preliminary memorandum." That's a misrepresentation to the parties that were contacted, albeit the limited numbers of parties that were contacted in the RFP process to do the status quo only, not to be on a track that was specifically designed for the clinic. No one got to bid on an emergency room in a freestanding health clinic or any of the other assets. We've been through that before. So, thank you, Mr. Butler. I've sent an email to you, and since we're talking about misstatements of fact, I just sent another email to the city council, and this addresses Mr. Bullock's involvement with the Huron Consulting Group and a series of emails that he obtained from them and misrepresented to them information in order to aid Mr. Summers' political campaign. You all have these public records. A document was altered. Mr. Butler has given me the documents. The document handed to the editorial board of The Plain Dealer on October 1st, 2015, was not the document that Huron Consulting sent to Tom Bullock in response to his inquiry. It's been altered. I'd like to know who altered the document. Mr. Bullock should not have been involved with Huron at all. He had voted already on the preliminary memorandum. Huron was supposed to be an independent consultant. He and Mary Louise Madigan and the mayor should have been far from them and not been involved in any information, and using them in a political campaign is sleazy, it's inappropriate, it's an abuse of his office. And this document was taken by Mr. Summers and given to the editorial board representing that Mr. Skindl's campaign had made the statements, when in fact I have documentation that Mr. Koons wrote these statements on the Safe Lakewood Hospital website. So this is a blatant lie. And I know you don't like that word, but you've been caught in a lie because you wrote in response to my public records requests that this was done for public, the public. And you've never replied to any public request that this was given to the public. It was an altered document given to Mr. Summers by someone, and Mr. Butler was copied on these emails, so he was well aware of the political use of Huron Consultants. And that is improper, and that is bad government. And you now have all the documents. I would like an answer. I think the public deserves an answer. And none of this grandstanding you talk about, Mr. Bullock. This is an unfair process where I am accused of something up here with no opportunity to respond, and it's just misinformation. Address what you did with the document and who altered it, and what your involvement was. Mr. Butler could answer how with his involvement. Mr. Summers could answer that. The public has a right to know what happened in the electoral process by public officials using a public consultant for political purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Essie. It's all you've got to talk. You know, if we were playing a basketball game, you would be like one of the centers who throws so many elbows that you get a technical foul and be tossed from the game. I think that your narrative was filled with so many factual errors. It's incredible distortion. I can't speak to everything you raised because I don't know what you're talking about. I will respond to the parts that I do know and correct the facts. First of all, what you're referring to is the Huron Report. That's a policy analysis report for the city government about the city government decision that we all made and that many of you have been participating in for some months. There was no political anything by me regarding the Huron Report. What I did was ask Huron to clarify whether Huron's report said what I read in several materials, some of which were Safe Lakewood Hospital materials, frequently filled with gross factual errors. Some were campaign materials by Mr. Skindl, who was running with a political interest for that office. The point I was getting at in asking for clarification from Huron was saying, hey, Huron, you wrote us a public policy analysis which is now being quoted in a political context. Is that quote in that political context, which wasn't mine, wasn't the mayor's either, is that quote quotes, were they accurate? That's what I asked Huron. Huron emailed me back some answers, didn't email me a report. So that's an example of one of your many factual statements or confusion, Mr. Essie. And they said, no, we didn't mean in our report what several of these political comments claimed we meant. In other words, what I was doing was trying to untwist the words that were twisted, not by Huron, not by me, but by political campaigns. After that, I have no ability to comment about the rest of what you're alleging. So I think there's a difference. Mr. Essie, if you think you have an interpretation of certain facts, that's great, although I recommend not being so sure without clarifying the interpretation of your facts. That's step one. But step two is, don't jump into an alarmist, accusatory, inflammatory, fallacious logical leap. Just because you saw me get a clarification about policy questions about a policy report to untwist the words that were twisted, that doesn't mean that I'm engaging in politics or that there's any misdeed. And yet, your statements more than once have been saying not, hey, Tom, what did you mean by this? Was this accurate? You're saying, I know for a fact, and I'm going to publicly accuse you in multiple locations of all kinds of misdeeds. So accuse or allege if you have the evidence. But the pattern, Mr. Essie, is that you don't. And when I try to patiently explain the mistakes of your interpretation of the facts, we don't seem to get anywhere. We get a new problem.
Mr. Chair, could I respond briefly?
Inflammatory, and frankly irresponsible accusations, whether you're a citizen or whether you're attorney. And since you are an attorney, Mr. Essie, your precision with how you speak and what you allege ought to be a significantly higher level of precision than a layperson like myself who is not an attorney. So I would invite you to de-escalate and communicate and be accurate.
Mr.?
Thank you, Chair. Could I unrespond?
Well, Director Butler, I believe, was going to provide a response to your comments. Thank you.
Yeah, just, council members, there is a document posted on the website, and at the top of it, it's called Parentarian Confidential. It says preliminary memorandum at the top, and it says, "Community Hospital Seeks Strategic Partner." It's authored by Subsidian Healthcare. I think it goes without saying that Subsidian Healthcare was hired by the Lakewood Hospital Association, not by the city. The first sentence, which you did not hear, Mr. Essie, repeat tonight from that document, is, "We represent a community hospital in the Midwest that seeks a strategic partner." The rest of that paragraph mentions, suggests that Subsidian is speaking on behalf of the municipality. I would invite you to look at that document. But it is entirely unfair to suggest that the city authored or authorized that particular document, particularly when someone who has the opportunity to be clearer skips over the first sentence of the document, clearly identifying the client as the hospital, not the municipality. You know, we've not paid Subsidian, we don't have an agreement with Subsidian. It's just a false statement to suggest that the city is concealing some representation by Subsidian of the city when you don't put forth all of the facts. So there's no act of concealment. I think Subsidian probably could have chosen its words better, but the city did not hire Subsidian, and we all know that. So to come here now, so many months later, after Subsidian first revealed itself to the citizens of Lakewood in January of 2015 as the advisor to LHA and has stayed consistent in that message from then until now, to suggest that the city is somehow concealing something is just inappropriate. I mean, it's really wrong.
Can I respond briefly? No, I'm sorry. Tonight, we're time-limited. We'll be moving on to Ms. Judy Gillespie.
I didn't hear anybody talk about the document being altered.
We'll be moving on to the comments from Ms. Judy Gillespie. Thank you.
Did I give my time to Brian to finish?
No.
Judy Gillespie, 23003, Chandler's Lane, Owensville, Ohio. I want to get through everything I have to say. And the one thing, I went to the internet and I saw my source was from the Lakewood High School tackles bug problem. It was Bruce Geiselman's article on October 20th, 2015, about the bedbugs. At the bottom of that article, Superintendent Jeff Patterson referred to the fact that the school district has bedbug information posted on its website. The district plans to send two representatives to the Cuyahoga County Board of Health, Health's Bed Bug Task Force. I was hoping by going to the Bed Bug Task Force, and I'll show you my sources because I want to be transparent, there's nobody's name on there. No high school, no city of Lakewood, no nobody. And that's Cuyahoga County. It's there. You don't have to reinvent the wheel. It's already there, and your name's not on the website. So my other point, under the paper that was passed out by you guys over on the table last year on explanation of the 49-15, there is mention about transportation. This is listed under the section, and I tried to find it in the agreement, but I couldn't find it. But it is under... it's a number four hospital in LHA wind-down. And under that section, number A, is miscellaneous, and it states, A, letter A, "Transportation dash promptly following execution of the master agreement, the city and the clinic will collaborate on an application for a planning grant from the Lakewood Hospital Foundation..." There's some where you could do with the money. "...or any other foundation agreed to by the parties to address transportation needs during the transition and following the opening of the Lakewood Family Health Center." So some of these people, if any of them get into any trouble on either side or any one of you, if this was being worked on, then maybe there would be help with transportation, because God knows we have an awful lot of old people that need help in transportation and getting to where they need to go. So I question, and I would like to have a response in two weeks as to what is or isn't being done to follow their own issue on number eight in the master agreement. The next part that I wanted to say, because I no longer live here, it's got nothing to do with it, everybody knows my heart is still here, I am very embarrassed for Mike Summers. When his deposition came out in print, and I started to look at it, and I... it's just way over my head. On page seven, he said, "I don't recall." On page eight, "I don't recall." On page nine, "I don't recall." Page 10, "I don't specifically recall." Page 12, "Oh, jeez, I can't remember all the names." Apparently, now, there's 25 lines on each little square if you print it off. I'm really concerned the man's having a problem with his memory. And you know what? When I start getting older, I...
Mr. Chair, quarters, ma'am. Mr. Chair, I'll just remind you, everybody on page one of every docket talks about our community guidelines, shall avoid personalizations, and that's why we address the chair.
But this is public work. This is public work.
I understand. But we don't have to take the additional step of getting personal. That's all.
But don't I have the right to talk about what I want to talk about?
There are limits, ma'am. There are limits.
The council are a person.
But if I'm not telling the truth, you tell Brian Essie when he's not telling the truth, but we can't tell the man that's running the city when he's not telling the truth? I see. Different set of rules. Okay, I got you. Not a problem. Now, we're going to deal with the fire chief here. I sent him a letter on the 16th of March, asking him questions because at the council meeting, I specifically asked him for a date range from 12/21/15 to 3/6/16. Now, while I went back to my seat, and I wasn't doing anything. Now, look how good he is. He's got his little tablet out there, and he's already starting to look up some figures while I'm talking. He's on the ball. He then, when I went back to my seat and I sat down and talked to the person next to me, he apparently quoted some stats, didn't say they were my stats, talked to somebody else about the stats. When he did, and I didn't hear it, I went out and finally, the minutes, I looked at the printed ones, and he said, it's so ironic, because the very same stats that he told me on the March 7th council meeting that he repeated that I didn't hear are the exact ones that he told Tom Monahan, with one exception, Scott. Now, 40% were transported to Fairview. My figures that you gave to me when I wasn't listening at the council on the 7th of March were all exactly the same, except it was 34% were transported to Fairview. So you were able to get all this information about last Monday, the ER saw 72 patients, they were targeting 60 patients a day, today EMS took 10 out of 10.
I'm sorry, we'll have to leave it there. Director Jelsimino, did you care to respond regarding the bed bug task force issue?
Council members, I just wanted you to be aware that I have met with Superintendent, and we have a representative there. School nurse is on the bed bug work group. When we talk about referring and when the superintendent refers to the county website, there were members from the city and the schools and a number of other organizations that attended the bed bug task force and continue to attend through the county. They actually, through County Board of Health, their intent and purpose is about education. So they have certainly been beneficial to us for that, and they are beneficial to the community for that because the knowledge about what a bed bug looks like, how to eradicate them, how to prevent them, all of that information is there, and it's really critical. It does not mean that we are necessarily going to show up on the website, and quite frankly, I have no idea how often they update their membership website. It's far more critical to me that we have a very active dialogue with all... It's far more critical to me that we have a very active dialogue with all of our partners in our community, that we are working on procedures and protocol, as simple as making sure that every worker who is going in and out of homes are taking the precautions to make sure that they are not bringing or carrying bedbugs back and forth. So there are layers and layers and layers of this issue that need to be a part of the discussion, not a single part.
Are you a member? That was all, that was the only 25 I had.
The City of Lakewood is, yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The numbers Ms. Gillespie asked for at council meeting were numbers that could be provided by the Lakewood Fire Department because they came from our records. The numbers she asked before in her letter are numbers that would have come from the Cleveland Clinic. And when I responded to her, I answered the two questions that were relative to Lakewood Fire Department, and responded to the other questions that they were not records kept by the Lakewood Fire Department. Those were numbers that would need to come from the Cleveland Clinic.
Thanks, I appreciate that clarification. Bonnie Rubin is our final speaker for tonight.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Rubin. I live at 14401 Detroit, which is a senior building. What I see as a lot of what's been going on, I've been coming to these meetings since, I think, November of 2015. If I may use an analogy, if you've ever seen the sculpture by the Justice Center and walked around it, it looks different from every single angle. And I don't know if, what was on the sculpture's mind when he designed this, but I just see it as justice looks different from every angle. And we seem to be talking about legal stuff and ethical stuff. I'm not a lawyer, so I can only, I feel, I can just deal with the ethical stuff. In my mind, what's going on is not ethical at all. A lot of these meetings were behind closed doors before the public got to hear anything about it. Back in the early 70s, I was a Vista volunteer, now known as AmeriCar for legal aid. One of my jobs was to start a consumers' organization. A lot of the cases that were referred to us by the attorneys were complaints that they couldn't resolve. Our group was able to resolve them mainly by picketing and passing out flyers regarding, most of our complaints, by the way, were from used car locks. And even though it was perfectly legal, whatever the contract they signed was, these people who came to us were having a lot of problems with the cars they bought. And guess what? We won just about all of our cases after maybe a week or two of picketing. I can't really argue again about legal questions. I really wish we weren't continually debating this, but I don't, as far as health goes, I don't see what a new building is going to do for my health or anybody else's. I would like to know what all the new stuff that's going to be going on in this new building will be. I don't know if it's going to be any different than what we already have. I never complained about what we do have. I thought what we have is great. I love all my doctors. I just wish we'll start thinking about what's best for the people of Lakewood, their health and our economy.
Thank you. That concludes some of the comments for tonight's meeting. Are there any announcements from council?
Mr. Chair, just quickly.
Yes, Councilwoman.
We all have our disagreements and things, but I'm certain that we all have loved ones, people in our lives that we care deeply about, and the seat to my left is empty because our colleague, Councilwoman Allen, is with his family, with his daughter, who's hopefully receiving a bone marrow transplant tomorrow. And I just ask that, with that in mind, we leave here with a spirit of care for each other, for our loved ones, and I want to thank a madam clerk for, you know, bringing this together to remember that. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor.
I have two entirely very different notes. The city received some very good news today that the ranking of protection classification from our fire department moved from a level three to a level two, one being the highest. That's a significant establishment. It's been a very long time since this community was a two. It puts us in the top 2% of the 2,800 communities in the state of Ohio, and roughly, in the top same 2% in the roughly 48,000 communities in the United States of America. What that means to us is assurance that the protection quality we get is among the best of the country, which we're very proud of and grateful for. And as a practical matter, what it generally would mean to most homeowners in Lakewood is potential for lower insurance rates because the chance of catastrophic fire loss is diminished as a result of the superior performance here. These are small steps that show that Chief Gilman and his team have worked very hard to improve their training, their response time, and their effectiveness at fighting fires. To go from a two to one is, would be a remarkable feat, but communities like Lakewood with the housing density that we have and the proximity that we have, it makes that probably almost an impossibility. So I want to congratulate Chief Gilman and his team for continuing to protect our city and in fact, improving that protection. And on a very different note than that, I am pleased to tell you that the city, the community of Lakewood has benefited and will benefit from a grant from the Nord family working with the federal government to employ up to 60 Lakewood youth for a six-week summer experience. Wages will be paid by YOU. Our challenge, however, is to find 60 employers who would be willing to create this work opportunity. You know, great communities invest in their youth, and we have an opportunity to potentially get productive work for our employers, but most importantly, help these youth to become job-ready, build citizenship, elevate expectations of themselves and their potential, and building connections of these youth to our neighbors and customers, our business community. So I would ask council to help me to find these 60 employers, and I will give you more information, but on May 4th, 7:30 to 8:30 a.m. at the Women's Pavilion, I'm hosting a symposium to give more information to these employers. So we've got a lot of work cut out for us, but certainly the youth of Lakewood, particularly those who qualify for this program through Youth Actories Unlimited, stand to have a great summer and certainly improve the strength and character of our community. So we've got some work ahead of us.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for both those updates. I know that I speak for my colleagues when I say that we'll definitely be reaching out to employers in our wards and constituencies that we think might be a good fit for that program, maybe even the council office, if it's a qualifying employer, would be a good fit for that program. On the note, I would like to invite my colleagues, and I appreciate the mayor for pointing this out, and congratulating Chief Gilman and the Lakewood Fire Department.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilwoman Marks.
I would just like to comment, it's wonderful to hear that our emergency services have been given that qualification. I have spoken to Chief Gilman on many occasions, and it's always quite an honor to listen to a speaker or talk to somebody who's passionate about what they do. And we're so lucky to have Chief Gilman heading our safety service, fire department and EMS. He loves what he does, and I encourage all of you to talk to him about the great job he does, and it's wonderful to finally see that the department is recognized. Thank you so much, Chief Gilman.
Thank you. Any other comments or announcements from the council or administration? Seeing none, move to adjourn. Motion's been made. Second, any discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we're adjourned.